The council session to order and welcome everybody that's here. If I can ask everybody to please stand, follow my invitation from Councilman Wright and follow my pledge of allegiance by David Sinclair.
Hello, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day and Lord, I just want to thank you for your word Jeremiah to tell us to call upon you and your show us great and mighty things. Lord, we just pray that you'll be with us throughout this meeting, Lord, and that you'll lead us and guide us and then help us to be, that our decision make will be pleasing to you, Lord. And I thank you for every person here today. I thank you for their concern and love for Union County and in Christ's name we pray.
To the flag, I lay allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will turn council over to our clerk of council for all.
District one, A. Wright.
President.
District two, John Glenn.
Yeah, President.
District three, David Sinclair.
President.
District four, Amy Smith.
President.
District five, Carolyn Mudd.
President.
District six, John Glenn.
President.
All right. At this time, I would have a certificate of appreciation and this goes out to Officer Scott Driftin for thirty-five years of dedicated service to Union County and specifically the Sheriff's Office. Scott, we thank you very much for all you do. Come on up here and grab this thing. Sheriff, you're more above, get your picture ready, win it too. Come on.
We get it on video yet? We have it lying.
All right. Now, with that, we have the approval of minutes from both April the ninth and April the twenty-third special finance meeting. Y'all will all send a copy of the minutes. We'll start with April the ninth. Do I have any additions or deletions to those? Here you go. Do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair to have a second. Second from Councilperson Rutherford. All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed, like sign. We will move to the April twenty-third special meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to those? Here you go. Do I receive a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion from Councilperson Flood, second.
Second.
Have a second from Councilperson Smith. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. See how easy that was? All right, so we move into our next order, which is the consideration of board appointments and/or removals if any. I know we have a few openings and I know we have a few applications. I have one open on the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission due to the resignation of Charles Lott. I do not have a replacement at this time. Appeals Board, Councilman Glenn, I know you've been seeking people. Have you found anybody yet or seen the app? I don't think so. I just wanted to check. Building Codes Board of Appeals, there are four vacancies there. This is an at-large appointment and I believe council saw three applicants for that. Is there any decision on those?
I make a motion that we appoint Jeff Tweed to the Building Code of Appeals.
I have a motion for Jeff Tweed to have a second. I have a second from Councilperson Flood. Any discussion? In favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And Jeff is on the appeals board.
I will make a motion to put Nixon Smalls of Building Two.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood for, to put Nixon Smalls on the appeals board. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Wright. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. Nixon Smalls is also on.
Make a motion for Ryan Warhead.
I have a motion, I have a motion for Ryan. Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilperson Sinclair. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And again, unanimous for Ryan. So there, we've got three. We'll have one more left on that and we're doing good. Crosskey Fire Department has one vacancy. That's an at-large.
About a year. I'm checking though.
And I know, I know we all have them. Tourism has one vacancy for Dr. Flood. Kelly Kelton has one vacancy that is at-large. We did fill that position, but that person did not live in the district, so therefore they were not, they were not able to, so we have had to reopen that position. And Phillip High has two vacancies at large. So at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce, I guess we're going to do this both, we're going to introduce Chief Mark Wade of the Santuk Fire Department and Brandon Norris of Burke Foreman to present to us a discussion for potential bond ordinance. And Brandon should be familiar to y'all as to me because we use Brandon on a regular basis for a lot of our projects.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here. I do have the privilege to represent Union County on a regular basis on a number of matters. And I guess that relationship goes back with my law firm quite a number of years, maybe twenty or thirty at least, as long as I've been practicing. So it's an honor to be able to help Union County from time to time. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of Santuk Fire District. The Fire District Board has adopted a resolution to authorize a petition to be submitted to Union County Council to approve issuance of not exceeding five hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds of the district. The bonds would be used for the purpose of, you know, constructing improvements for the district, namely a new building adjacent to the existing fire station. And I'll let Chief Wade sort of explain the need and what they have to build. I think he's got some architectural liniments he can pass around to you, but the district has identified a significant need, would like to issue the general obligation bonds to pay for it. That's the only feasible means of paying for it. We're not here tonight to ask the county to approve it in lieu of a vote by the residents of the district. There would be a referendum called under the documents we're preparing them, so because state law is as it is, even though the voters would have to approve issuance of the bonds, we still have to have County Council approve itself. So the request is for the County Council to approve issuance of bonds pending a successful referendum. If the referendum were to fail, there would be no issuance of bonds. If the referendum passes, the district would already have the approval from you all to go forward and issue the debt. Under state law, there's a process for a special purpose district like Santuk. It's somewhat time consuming, so we have to start this process now in order to have a ballot item on the, the general election, on the ballot. I think that's, that's most of what I wanted to cover. So the way it would work is at the next meeting of council, unless I'm expected otherwise, the next meeting of council, there would be a bond ordinance provided to you all for a first reading. That ordinance would authorize the issuance of not exceeding five hundred thousand dollars of general obligation bonds of the district. And it would only be effective if the, if the referendum passes. It would also order a referendum. At the same time, we would ask County Council to adopt a resolution to order a public hearing that would happen at third reading of that ordinance. This is just sort of mechanics of the statute that the Fire District has to follow. So once issued, the debt will be repaid from debt service millers that will be levied within the district, just like general obligation bonds at the county except for they're limited to the residents and property owners of the district. And maybe if that would be okay for Chief Wade to explain the project and maybe show the, the referendum, so if you got.
Please, please. So we're, thank you for allowing us to talk, my counsel. We got a couple of things that we got from Plainly Architect here and what we're trying to do is build a separate building that's not hooked to our station with the trucks in it. And the reason we're wanting to do that is because right now, we're unable to have training sessions during the summer to focus on this like a oven in there. So we're trying to do it some there and the other day. Not really the best thing. One of the other big things is we have no way for showers or to wash turnout gear. And as some of y'all know, there's a big push now about cancer that, you know, we're supposed to provide them a way to get clean and to get the turnout gear back clean to the best possible way. So that's the reason we're looking to try to do that at this time. Have like a kitchen training room that's actually heated and aired that we don't really have now. We've got heat in that building. So that's a cheap frame that might fall apart as I do them, but that's, it's just a bare bone type building that has the compliant bathrooms, showers, a couple of offices and what might be a couple of bedrooms that will fall out.
Mark, how much are you anticipating this village to be?
We're in the process of that now. I haven't actually got that estimate.
We're working with the auditor to get an estimate. It looks like, and the answer to your question will obviously depend on the term of bonds, the interest rate, you know, all these things. It looks like right now, if we assume a twenty-year term, that it could be, depending on how much the total principal amounts issued, figuring between seven and nine mils roughly would be added on. That's, that's an estimate at this point. We don't know exactly, we can't know until we find out what the interest rate would be with the settled debt, but that's a, that's a figure that the auditor handles more.
In clear transparency, Chief Wade approached me with this about six months ago and maybe right, maybe just a little bit sooner than that, maybe it hadn't been that long, but time gets away, but they approached and said, look, this is what we'd like to do and if there's no way we can fund this off of our operation funds that we can aim. And he asked, what would the process be? What I did was is I referred him to Brandon at Burke Foreman for the simple fact that we use them regularly. They're already county attorneys. We already have a, a good working relationship with them and Santuk Fire Department is quasi-Union County government. So we got those two together and that's what's brought us to this point. The cost given to him for the building was right at five hundred thousand dollars and that's the reason why they set the billage that. And Brandon and Chief Wade have done a young man's job in getting what they had to do where they took, to get it to this point. One of the reasons why we would have to have a first reading kind of quick is because this is had, if it's going to be on the ballot, it has to get to the voter's registration office, I believe by August the fifteenth, correct?
Correct. August fifteenth, yeah.
So this is a, again, one of those three, you've got to have three ordinances on the resolution to do that. And basically what I asked Brandon to do tonight was to come and let's explain the process of, we had any questions. That way, as we go through this, the next three readings, y'all will know what we're doing. We are not authorizing five hundred thousand in debt. That is not what this board is doing. What this board's doing is saying is if, that we approve, that if the voters agree in the majority for this bond, that we will work with them to see that it is, that they can go into town. Did I say that right, Brandon?
I think that's fair, yes. So there, there are two approval steps under state law for a special purposes district to issue general obligation bonds. The County Council has to approve the issuance of the debt, whether there's going to be a referendum or not. In this case, there's going to be a referendum, so we're asking you all to call that referendum. But also, the Board of Fire Control would have to approve it. So there would be a separate resol, bond resolution, if you will, of the Board of Fire Control for Santuk Fire District, and it would actually authorize issuance of the bonds. But County Council would be by this ordinance giving its approval, that preliminary approval that's needed. And you're right, Mr. Supervisor, it would only be effective if the referendum passes. There would be, as I mentioned, a resolution that would be approved at this, at the May twenty-first meeting, which would call for a public hearing. That public hearing would be held at third reading of the bond ordinance. At the same time, we would ask that first reading of the bond ordinance be held. And then I believe we've got a schedule where, let's see, second reading would be June eighteenth and then third reading would be July ninth. That gives us just a little bit of wiggle room before the August fifteenth deadline.
First reading was when?
First reading would, next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, yes, sir. And we'll, you know.
Motion session.
Yes, sir. There's a little bit of wiggle room in that schedule, but not much, as you pointed out. It's, we're a little bit compressed and we're going to make the, make the general election, which I think, you know, in the chief of the district's view and probably in your view is important because you get the most return out typically to your general election, gives the highest number of people the opportunity to speak on the matter.
So is it, if we sought out any other funding before we go and ask the taxpayers?
So right now, and I, I'd like Chief Wade to maybe explain, because I don't know the measure completely, but I do know that their millage, it's a volunteer fire department. The, the millage is currently levied, is not used to pay salaries or anything like that. It goes, it's completely soaked up by the cost of trucks, equipment, what have you, just operating. And so there's not, the, the district doesn't have a lot of ability to increase that operating millage under state law, as you all know, they're capped, just like the county is by Act three eighty-eight. So other than gifts, donations, that kind of thing, the district doesn't have a lot of state law mechanisms to, to borrow.
There's ways to get other funds. I mean, we've got some evil, we don't.
That was CBDG.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's other options for funding.
I'm not saying there's other options. I'm just saying in terms of borrowing, there's no other real way.
My thing is I'd just rather taxpayers be the last for funding instead of first.
I will say that we're thirty thousand dollars a year we pay for a truck payment. And by the time December rolls around, everything's cut off. There's no more spending.
I'm not questioning that you need assistance with the funding. I just prefer that the first place we look, not need a taxpayer.
We had plenty of folks come to us, say, we'll lend the D, we'll lend the G, it's right, but we just, at this point, we're just strapped with good money for truck payment.
I mean, like I said, we know we got one fire department almost completely built by CBDG and.
I was told at that point, once that happened in the latter truck day, that you wouldn't get enough of them for ten years. I don't know that, but.
Okay.
How easy it is to have somebody going on at one time, right?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
The state's got a ton of money. The state has a ton of money to set there.
What we, what we've done here is, is, I mean, we don't have an action listed on this. This was just for us to consider. Now, we are, I, I would, based on what Chief Wade and what Brandon have provided, I, I would want to move forward with a first reading and get council's entertainment next week, if that's okay with council.
Move forward.
That's why, I, I think we should, and Brandon, I think you've got all the documentation ready.
I'll give everything to you, Mr. Park.
Any other questions of Chief Wade or Brandon? All right, thank you, gang. Appreciate y'all.
Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to y'all tonight.
Always good to see y'all. All right, our next item of business is to consider approval of the prioritized community needs list as provided based on the assessment hearing on April the ninth conducted by the Council of Governments. In your package and, and online advertised was eight items where we went through our needs list and created those eight. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I'm making a motion, something was written.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair, accept as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Ms. Smith. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Okay, and then the next are going to be our ordinances. The first ordinance is, this is a, an ordinance, Union County budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This is second reading. I know that y'all have all seen this, important through those numbers. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading of the budget?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilperson Flood, I have a second from Councilperson Sinclair. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved unanimously. The next is an ordinance calling for a referendum to authorize the Department of Revenue to issue permits to allow possession, self-consumption of alcohol without regard to the days, hours of sale, second reading. This, this ordinance is to put on the ballot Sunday alcohol sales is what this is. This is second reading. Do I have a motion?
Oh, my gosh.
I have a motion from Councilperson Smith, I have a second from Councilperson Rutherford. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I have one opposition. That would be Councilman Sinclair. Understand too, Rutherford.
Yeah.
Our next ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain county-owned real property to the City of Union and other matters related thereto. This is first reading entitled only and this is involving the transfer of the Buffalo Mill property to the City of Union. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn, I have a second from Councilperson Flood. Are there any questions?
Quickie question here.
Yes, sir.
Where's the reverse ordinance to convey the dry cleaner to us?
Very, very good question. We only have to have a resolution to accept property. It does, it only requires one reading, not three. But also, please note that we will not take possession of that property until what time it's had an environmental one and environmental two study done on it and that DEHEC is involved to make sure that we, we do the land transfer the correct way, so that we accept no liability of this, other than the paperwork of doing the VCC property cleanup.
I also think we need to make note that this is still an ongoing process, that nothing's set in stone yet. This is just a first reading. There's some conversations that need to take place between the City of Union, the county and DEHEC and even the citizens of Buffalo.
And, and as we've had numerous conversations, we're waiting right now presently on the information back from the contractor who's going to do the cleanup of Buffalo and see what that cost is and what's the scope of that work based on the reports that they have. Again, Union County can't afford to clean it up. This is our way. This is a way to clean that property up at grant expense, not at Union County physical dollar expense. But we do need to make sure that we have clarity between everybody involved, so we know what the end goal is. So any other questions? Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is unanimous. So we are through with the ordinances. Now we have recognition of our two elected officials. Hey, Ms. Eddie.
Hey.
Hey, Sheriff. Would either one of y'all like to talk?
Yeah, I'll say something quick. It won't be long. But anyway, just kind of update you on the situation in Carlisle, Ms. Lane, Ms. Lisa Johnson. First of all, keep running your prayers. Second, we had a lot of community support. Councilman Glenn had the fire department, forest season out there with the searches too. I just want to thank you for that. The mayor, Mayor Glenn, that is, she's been real helpful in the uptown hall. So it was a group effort. They had a lot of volunteer firemen come down and help us search. And so like I said, it's been a group effort from the county of Union. That, that's a good thing to have everybody pitch in. Supervisor Russell was helpful in helping, make things happen that we needed to happen in order to get this, get the people from outside of the county to help us work and feed us. So that was a, that was a good deal. So just keep them in your prayers and we're going, we'll be back down there soon. We're doing, working on it every day, so we're going to go back and search for areas. But just if you hear anybody in the community that does anything, let us know, we'll check it out. We had a conversation with the cops at Bethel Baptist Church in P Ridge. Councilman Wright was there. We had ten deputies and investigators answering anything that they wanted to ask, we answered. There'd be drug situation, on to property crimes, whatever. We were there approximately an hour. It turned out to be a good turnout. A lot of questions were asked and I think it's good for the community for us to, to talk to them and let people know what's going on out there. So I appreciate the church asking us to come do that and if there's any other churches out there or any organization wants us to come do that, we'll sit down and help you and your community. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. I will say, I've been to Carlisle, they've been down there three days at one point in time and, and then a day and a half the next. I've been down there both times. The commitment from both internal and assisting agencies and the ground pounding in the large areas that they've searched have been amazing, the drone crews that they've used. There is no question that the sheriff and his staff and our EMD staff have tried to leave no stone uncovered. Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Eddie? All right, Supervisors report, I'd like to start off real quick and introduce, I think everybody knows that Sammy Domanduris, our first chair county attorney, has been appointed to a family court judge and his effect, we have a letter from him, his effective day of retirement or exit after twenty-four years is May the thirty-first. Pete Domanduris has served his second chair. What's been good about that is if, if one wasn't available, the other one was, it didn't cost us any more than we had to. Pete's been doing that for twenty-one years and he has also become a family circuit court judge, again, starting July the first. His exit day, separation date is May the thirty-first. I'd like to introduce to council our new, what will be our new attorney effective June the first, Ms. Jenny Williams. Jenny is an attorney presently with our solicitor's office. She's not leaving that position. This position is basically a part-time position and she'll be assisting us as our county attorney effective next month. So welcome Jenny to the family and to the club. We look forward to working with you. I tell you, with council, with budgets going on and, and it's raining and grass is growing and weeds is growing and dogs are out, we, we have had a really, really busy month. But I, I sent the Supervisors report out, y'all can see it. Let's start with money. We're still, we're at one point three seven million under budget, but again, remember we have a thirteenth month. So all the gas we buy in June and the food we buy in June, the utilities that we use in June, those bills will be paid out of the thirteenth month or out of this budget. We, we are still good. The point that I'm trying to make is, is that we're managing that twenty-three point two three million dollar budget very well. We do have a number of openings in our. Um, we do have a number of openings in our, our, um, workforce. Um, so, uh, if you know of anybody that needs a good job, we've got correctional officers, a couple sheriffs, deputies, animal control codes, and we also have a, uh, opening in nine one one. So, uh, again, I know a raise is gonna be good, maybe it'll stop some of that exodus, but, um, we, we still have some holes that we need to fill. Um, so, animal control is still working good. You will notice some of their calls are down, it's just because there've been less of them to answer calls, I'll just be completely honest with you. Um, they are working really, really hard. We actually did, uh, adopt out twenty-five dogs last month, so, um, we, we're seeing a, a lot of good assistance with some rescues, and we really, we really appreciate that. Um, I'm just gonna flip down a few of these, I'm not gonna hit every one of them, item by item. Um, in our, um, jail, we currently have eighty-nine total inmates. Now, y'all will think, "Wait a minute, hold on, that's a lot." No, we were at a hundred and twenty a year ago this time. Um, but eighty-nine, a hundred and twenty was inmates. Uh, it was not our trustees, and it wasn't our county, um, thirty-day people. Um, so, we have really come down even more than that. Um, eighteen of the eighty-nine are state trustees, sixty-seven are pre-trial, we're waiting, um, for them to go to trial, um, and we have three males and one female, a total of four, that are thirty-day, um, uh, signees from the magistrate's office. We do have fourteen inmates, and they've been in our possession for over a year. So, uh, they're working through the court system on that. Um, economic development, uh, just, they, they, they did a lot last month. It is an election season, you will typically see economic development and business slow down a little bit. If you don't believe that, just go look at the stock market, because it's an election season. Um, but I have not seen Dalton and his staff slow down. Uh, they did a career day at the schools on April the eleventh, all day long. It was a great turnout, hosted by, um, all kind of professions and industries, as well as students. Um, we've been in contact with, uh, mid-upper scale hotel brands, um, trying to bring them and recruit them to Union. Uh, we've worked with, uh, our retail strategies group, they've got new national chain restaurants that are now opened up for the Union market. Um, we're continuing to work with Lockhart on our Midway Green Industrial Park, um, for the pad for our, um, next spec building. We've gotta have a spec building, you gotta have something to show for people to come and look at. Um, something that's not in the report, and I think you'll find impressive, we got a new software. And I can tell you, I'm impressed with the software, and Dalton knows I'm a, a, a tech nerd, but I can tell you, by doing a GeoFits around Tentkin Park and putting in a date range, I can tell you, last year, there were a hundred and twenty-eight thousand people from out of town who came to visit Tentkin Park. I can tell you that there were eight thousand people that went to Umequah Union. There were seven thousand out of town people that went to the Coon, the Coon Festival, or Walker Days, as they called it. I can tell you that last year, there were over a hundred thousand people that came and visited Union, and their average length of stay was two point seven days. How do I know this? This right here tracks everything. The cell phone tracks it all, and this is awesome information for us to be able to utilize to recruit industry and to recruit, um, commercial and retail establishments here, and it's, it's the tool that we needed. So, uh, great tool, great addition by Dalton. Uh, EMS ran four hundred and seventy-four calls. Um, our fire service, uh, emergency manager, rather, has been really busy with fires, uh, with the missing search. We did have our command bus that, uh, did, has been in Carlisle twice. Understand that this command bus, they were gonna get rid of, uh, until we came on council with a nonstop. There's nothing wrong with it, and we have utilized it, and it is a great, great resource. Um, we've had fifteen new addresses given last month. That's important, because that's great. Fifteen new addresses. Now, this does not include the Buffalo Creek subdivision. Uh, those, that's in the city, it's already addressed, so it's fifteen brand-new addresses. Um, you'll see the, the almost four thousand nine one one calls, and, um, and then we'll roll over to our, our permits, and you'll see where we have done, along with getting to it. Fifty-three building permits last month, and again, that has nothing to do with Buffalo Creek. So, I can remember times we didn't have anything going on, so we're, we're doing really well. South State Bank, better known as the Go Building, we are going to start moving in this week. I picked, this month, I picked May the twentieth as a, a potential start date. Um, it will be for the assessor. Presently, there are, Debbie, quit smiling at me. Uh, she don't wanna move. There are, um, there, there are computers being set up right now in, in every area that they're at work. It's important that the treasurer, the auditor, the assessor, and delinquent tax, they have all got to work and be able to communicate. Those computers were being set up and started last week, they'll finish up this week, um, making sure the chats are set, they're getting the right information from the servers, we're able to, to load up. We're gonna make sure all that's right before we get in the process of moving in. We are not going to be in a hurry, we don't have to. I do meet with Anna Brown tomorrow, I'm gonna take Anna, um, through the new building, show her the tour, um, and create, uh, go ahead and get her, get ready to create some newspaper, uh, articles as to when we may move. I'm gonna do the same with Daniel, to make sure that WBCU is well informed, and Jerry McKee will also put it on our website. Um, on the day that we do officially move from this building across the street, we will have, um, I will, I will have, uh, forgot what they're called, there're little boards with signs on it that says, "Go across the street," or "Go to the south, go to South State Bank, go to the Go Building." We have moved across the street, and we'll go ahead and start getting those up as we're moving, so people will know. So, that, that's gonna be the most important thing. I don't want people to get caught, "Uh-oh, we've just moved, we've gotta have a, a advertisement plan." The jail project, it is going smooth. Uh, you'll see a list of items that have been completed. Um, there's only been, uh, four change orders to the total job, all of that was dealing, where they found, uh, unknown utilities at Foundation. Um, everything is going smooth with it. Sparkleburg County, Union County line, uh, have not received the names of Sparkleburg County yet on their committee. Our committee is Mr. Robert Bob Love and Roger Bailey, and they're ready to go to Columbia immediately. Uh, Roger said he wanted pictures. Buffalo Mill property, um, again, we're still waiting on the cost and scope, um, but as soon as we have that, we will have a public meeting. Buffalo Mill Pond, uh, we did get our plans back from Rogers and Calcott. Um, I've been sending y'all a Friday update when I made, well, y'all, y'all appreciate that, you like that. Just kinda give you a snapshot. The, what I am hoping is, is that you saw the copies of those plans, you looked through them. If you've got any questions, any follow-ups, please let me know, um, so I can get those back to the architect. We're really, really close to going to bid with this project. We have about fifteen months out before we run out. I'm ready to go ahead and get this released, so we can get construction done. Goldville Fire Station, Congress did approve us another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project, so, um, we are ready to sign a document. I'm waiting on the Congress to have that document to us, so we can sign to commit to the, um, the, so some of the construction is the winning bidder, and we are ready to go ahead and let them begin contract on, on construction on that. The Bonham aerial fire truck, it is another CBDG, um, uh, grant. It is out, out for bid presently. Some bad news that I have, uh, our request for one point five billion dollars to convert a fire service radio at eight hundred megahertz did not make it through the House budget. Um, that was not, I, I've gotta make this point, and it's not due to a lot of help from our representative here, Representative Gill, and other representatives that we work with, and we know they pushed forward for it. Uh, the Ways and Means Committee decided that they would hold back a bunch of projects, and that was one of them. So, we'll just go back again to that next year. Now, there's still a glimmer, a hint, maybe, that as they go to conference committee, the Senate, Senate conferences may be able to help get this back in. Um, again, I've, I've talked to Senator Peeler and Senator Martin in their offices, they're doubtful, but they said they would do what they can do. So, um, our next cleanup day is June the twenty-fourth, excuse me, June the twenty-first. While I'm at that, the next cleanup day being June the twenty-first, if you'll notice on the schedule that was sent out to y'all two months ago, it showed that our council meeting, for some reason on that schedule, was gonna be on June the twenty-fourth. Well, that's Friday, we ain't gonna have y'all meeting on council on June the twenty-fourth. It's June the eighteenth. We all agreed that we would just move from the eleventh to the eighteenth, and I may have put out a bad calendar. They ain't no may have, bad calendar got put out, it was on me, all right?
Whoa, 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 why are we moving?
It's Ju- June, the primary is the eleventh, and so we moved it to the eighteenth. We didn't talk about that, Doc.
I'll be in Mexico.
I already had it on my calendar as the eighteenth.
Yeah, we, we talked about it. Yeah, we did. But I just wanna make sure, y'all didn't show up on Friday too, okay? That was my main point. Showed up on Tuesday the eighteenth. Um, but I did have a schedule of all of our, our meetings. So, um, with, with that said, um, I have asked to go into an executive session to discuss the personnel matter. Can, uh, I ask for a motion that we consider going into executive session?
I have a motion second.
I have a motion and a second. I have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll consider ourselves in...